Are you ready, Brianna, Jeff?
We are.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gary.
All right, we will call the July 23 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic or which is its hand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. All right, roll call. It's a little different tonight. We have the members seated now that we're seated at the June 25 meeting. And that would be Susan.
Present.
Rick, Rich?
Present.
John?
Present.
Ruth Ann?
Present.
Me, and then Eliana is seated for Tracy Mansky, who is absent.
I'm in person.
Okay. Brianna, Jeff, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. The minutes, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of the June 25 meeting?
No, sir.
No.
All right, then do we have a motion?
I move to approve the June 25, 2020, meeting minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that we approve the meeting minutes from June 25. I will call the roll. Eliana?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Ruth Ann?
Hi.
Me, I. All right. Moving on here. I've got kind of a statement to make, so bear with me. "Thank you for attending the Parker Planning Commission meeting. Before the meeting begins, I emphasize that if you wish to make a public comment on any item on this hearing, you must be joined into the Zoom webinar link posted on the town's website, Facebook Live participants are only able to view and listen to the meeting. Now would be a good time to leave Facebook Live and join the Planning Commission meeting on Zoom if you wish to comment on any agenda item by using the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature. We appreciate your attendance in the Planning Commission and your cooperation." All right. We are down to then item number six, a public hearing. And that is a public hearing of Old Town Parker, ordinance number 3.162-3, a bill for an ordinance to amend the Old Town Parker Plan Development Guide and plan and to amend the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith, and B filing two sketch and preliminary plans. These items were remanded back to the Planning Commission to allow the Planning Commission to obtain more information from members of the public that were not able to participate in the public hearing that was held on these items on June 25, 2020. The Planning Commission was advised by town staff that some members of the public attempted to access the public hearing through Facebook Live instead of the Zoom webinar link that was provided on the town's website. Please note that the remanded public hearing will be reopened for a limited purpose of allowing town staff to present information related to the remand and to allow those members of the public that attempted to access the June 25, 2020, public hearing through Facebook Live to provide public comment. The applicant will be allowed to respond to the additional public comments. Following the additional public comments and response by the applicant, I will close the public hearing. The planning commissioners that were present on June 25 are present tonight with the exception of one commission member that is not able to attend tonight's meeting. Commissioner Eliana Burke will fill in for the commission member that is absent. And here I ask, Eliana, have you reviewed the meeting from June 25?
I have. I've read the meeting minutes and I saw part of the video.
Okay, thank you. Following the Planning Commission's deliberation, in which we will consider the additional public comment in response, we will need to consider new motions for the zoning, sketch, and preliminary plan. Please note for the record that town staff contacted Brandy and Cory Wilks and the Old Town HOA in addition to the town council and Planning Commission agendas that were posted concerning the remand of this matter. And so, given that, we will now open this public hearing at 7:05. And Brianna, we are all yours.
Okay, one second while we share the screen. Perfect. "Good evening, commission members and chairman. This evening, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Oldie Town at Parker Plan Development and for a sketch and preliminary plan. The applicant is Norris Design and the representative is Bill Maher. The applicant is present to answer any questions the commissioners might have following staff's report. The site is located on the south side of Main Street between Jordan Road and Matsumbaka Road. The PD amendment will add 12.2 acres to the Oldie Town at Parker subdivision for condominium and single-family attached housing to be known as Cinderos Creek North. The sketch and preliminary plans propose 48 residential townhome sites and a five-plus acre site on which to construct three multifamily condo buildings. Additionally, the applicant will reconfigure two adjacent commercial lots and the existing drainage facilities. This PD amendment is consistent with the Parker 2035 master plan, which identifies this area as a medium-density residential and is within a neighborhood center. Currently, there are multifamily uses allowed within the PD and some multifamily already exists within the development today. Higher-density residential is appropriate at this location as a transition between less intense residential and non-residential areas. This mixed-use project combines a variety of housing types with a design that expands pedestrian connectivity and encourages residents to walk or bike to attain goods and services. The two commercial lots and adjacent drainage areas are currently located in Planning Area 1 and are designated as a commercial center. This area will remain largely unchanged in terms of uses. The sketch and preliminary plans propose 48 lots and one 5.236-acre lot that will be developed into three condominium buildings containing 108 dwelling units for a total of 156 new residential units. Additionally, the plot will reconfigure two commercially zoned lots and reclaim 1.86 acres of the adjacent drainage tracts through reengineering. These two commercial lots and the drainage tracts will be removed from filing 1 and replanted into filing 2. Staff has reviewed the proposal and as outlined within staff's report has determined that the uses, density, and overall design considerations recommended for the medium-density residential and the neighborhood center districts are consistent with the proposed PD amendments and with the nine approval criteria for the rezoning request. Additionally, the project satisfies the requirements in the land development ordinance for a sketch and preliminary plan and the public knows requirements have been met. Therefore, staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend approval for the Oldie Town at Parker Third Amendment to the Development Guide and Plan. And staff is also recommending that Planning Commission recommend approval for the Town at Parker filing two sketch and preliminary plans with the two conditions as recommended in staff's report. Staff is available for any questions that commissioners may have. The applicant is also present this evening to answering questions and would like to introduce themselves at this time."
Mr. Maher, do you want to introduce yourself to the group?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and staff. My name is Bill Maher and I am with Norris Design. And we are part of the project consulting team along with Martin and Martin and Gothic Soodic Architects. The applicant and property owner is Brian Byler with Pacific North and he is on this meeting tonight. And I will not go over my presentation from last month, but we appreciate the opportunity to be back here and to just give you a brief overview. As you know, we've been working on this neighborhood for approximately four years and are excited about the development that's occurring in the southeast portion. And along with that, the community pool that is near completion and park area and numerous trails and landscaping areas. And tonight, we are excited to bring forward this additional residential area along with park spaces and amenities that will serve the greater neighborhood. And my team is available tonight to answer any questions you may have. And thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, are there any questions for staff or the applicant at this time?
None. None.
Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment is from members of the public who wish to comment on this item before this. Each member who has raised their hand in the Zoom application will be given three minutes to speak. At about 15 seconds left, I will give you kind of the heads up, but we need to kind of hold to that. That is our standard as we move forward. Each speaker gets three minutes. And so, at this point, we will open the meeting to public comment.
Commissioner Paul, I have Gary Wilks. Cory Wilks?
Cory Wilks. Mr. Wilks, go ahead, please state your name and address. Yes, please state your name and address for the record and you may begin.
Okay, my name is Cory Wilks. I'm at 17402 East Newtown Parkway. I am a fan of all things Parker. I'm a real estate broker by trade for almost 20 years, a previous licensed appraiser. And I'm personally impacted by this potential decision as are all of the other single-family residences in this community. I think I have just a few points that I really want to make clear. First and foremost, in 2013, when I bought this home, I did not sign up to live in a community with condos. Specifically chose to live in a community of single-family residences as that's the lifestyle I wanted for my family and my kids. And that would be true for all the single-family residences. We need the town to defend us from this position. What I believe is happening is Pacific North, I think they see dollar signs and it doesn't mean that that fits or that's good for all. The dollar signs, I have been personally infected or affected by in my backyard, Pacific North, when I bought this lot, the lot behind me had space for a home. It's like my backyard, backyard and then a home. And they had snuck a, it snuck a, I don't know, a replotting where now I have, if I can share my camera with you, I have a house five feet from my backyard. So I've already been victimized once. Now the back of my backyard, I have a window three feet from my back fence here. And now, the impact of having condos in our community, I can tell you as a licensed appraiser, is a devaluation of anywhere from 10 to 12% for anybody that lives within the area. And our homes are worth about 500 grand. That's going to devalue our homes by 45, $50,000 each. And I'm just not okay with it. So ultimately, that's, those are my main two points. Is number one, I didn't sign up to live in a condo community. There's other ways that you can build a home here. You could build other paired homes. There are other multifamily homes in the neighborhood, true, but they have two-car garages. They are not condos, even though technically, legally, they're condos. They function much more like townhomes. So we have some homes that are paired and we have single families, but we do not have the traditional three-story condo. And this is just going to change our entire experience.
30 seconds, Mr. Wilks.
So, the key point for me, I've already been impacted by Pacific North squeaking one past the goalie. I have a house five feet from my back fence. And, second point, it's a 10 to 12% price adjustment to live in a community with condos. Do you want that in your backyard? I don't think you do. I don't want it in my backyard either.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilks. All right. Jeff, do we have another?
We do. We have Sarah.
Sarah, no last name. Okay.
Yes, hello. And first of all, I want to start by just thanking everybody for reopening this public comment period. I understand, well, I can't really understand, but I can empathize how busy schedules are, so I appreciate the second chance to voice our concerns.
Sarah, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, absolutely. I apologize. Sarah Lucinco, 17474 East Newtown Parkway.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Of course. So I've relayed a number of concerns to Parker over the last few months since we were made aware of this development. My first concern is traffic impact. I understand there's a traffic study that has been developed and published, but there's no metric identifying what is acceptable level of traffic and what is not. So when we talk about adding 108 condos plus 50 some townhomes, no, we're looking at additional at least 200 vehicles, closer to 300, through the neighborhood by the park in front of my house where we already have significant traffic impacts and safety risks to our children. Second of all, when the builder punched the access to American Academy through the neighborhood, they've effectively just turned our neighborhood into a drop-off, an alternative drop-off lane for an American Academy for parents who don't want to sit through the appropriate drop-off lanes. Let's just fingers crossed that school does reopen. That's another primary concern of ours. I do have safety and structural concerns about having a three-story condo with underground parking. I would like to know if there is equivalent condos in Parker that have underground parking that's been approved by the city and proven to be effective, that doesn't have water seepage issues, surface water drainage issues into the building, underground building structure that could preclude use. Another concern I have is the number of parking spaces available for the condo units in particular. I believe I emailed somebody at the city a number of times asking for this. My math, based on the files that they've referred me to numerous times, indicates we're still 20 spaces short to account for the number of units that are being proposed. Which leads me to my next point, and it deals with street parking and emergency vehicle access. So if there is an overflow of unavailable parking, people are going to be parking on the streets and how are emergency vehicles going to access the condos, access whatever is happening where people need help? Currently on Newtown Parkway, if there are cars parked on both sides of the streets, you can barely get a passenger vehicle through. So I don't understand how a fire truck, ambulance, anything else is going to be able to get through. And we're talking about people's safety and lives, honestly, at that point, if you're calling 911.
30 seconds, Sarah.
Yes, thank you. We're relying on safety to show up. And then the last thing, the general aesthetics of the design just do not match our neighborhood. It looks very commercial. It looks like any sort of Dropbox, cookie cutter condo apartment building that Parker has been approving and throwing up over the last five years. So the aesthetics also do not match the neighborhood. So with that, those are my thoughts and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Sarah.
She went off. Okay, Commissioner Paul, we have Brandy Wilks.
Okay. Brandy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
This is Brandy Wilks at 17402 East Newtown Parkway. So, also fully agreeing with Cory Wilks, my husband, and also agreeing with Sarah on all of those points. A couple of other things that I wanted to just add real quickly. My family's been in Parker since 1978. I am a true Parkerite, so I really do love our community. We are hoping that just because something might have been said that it was okay 20 years ago in the master planned area where it was supposed to be high-density housing, doesn't mean that things can't change. Obviously, you guys are considering rezoning. Things change all the time. And so what I'm really asking is, if you guys insist on re-changing the zoning to this, can you please just consider it being single-family homes or paired homes and not the condos? For all of those reasons they said, but also because, you know, the pool that we were guaranteed when we moved in, and I get that the metro district has been through a lot in the millle位s, but you add another 200-ish people housing over there. It's not going to be a single person per the house. There are going to be an average of three people per the house. So we're talking, you know, an additional 600 people living over there on a pool that already is going to be at max capacity if people choose to enjoy the summer or a hot day. And so it's just going to put a strain on that, too. There's definitely not enough parking spaces and we already deal with houses and we already are dealing with the townhomes behind us that were just built of people not having enough places to park because they use their garages as storage units. And it is a real concern. I did email all the other concerns, but I just want to make it crystal clear. Our HOA and our metro district are ran by the same person and he does not speak for all of us. I know that he is very much for this because he wants to pay down the mill levy, but it doesn't matter. The HOA is fine financially and even if we do do these, he's even made it clear that the mill levy is not going to get paid off for 30 years. So to me, that's just kind of a BS thing to throw in there. We're really just wanting to keep our community and our neighborhood great. And if you look at other communities like Stro Ranch that do have condos in there, like what Cory was saying, you can actually very easily, and we'd be happy to share this with you, document to where once those condos were added, the home values dropped. And people don't want to live in those neighborhoods and I really don't want to move. This is my home forever and I love my neighborhood. So I'm begging you guys to please just reconsider zoning on this. And if you do insist on zoning it to residential, please, I'm begging you, zone it to single-family or with the townhomes, but not these condos that look like prisons. Please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brandy.
All right, next up is Yvonne.
Okay. Yvonne, are you there?
Hello.
Hi, would you please state your name and address for the record?
This is Yvonne Arago. I'm at 11402 South Trailmaster.
Thank you.
Circle. My concerns are exactly what everybody else has spoken to. I think that the underground parking is going to bring a lot of crime. I know that Parker has had a lot of increase of crimes and Stro Ranch where they have condos, they have, there's always something going on over there. And I don't want that brought here. Like this is where I'm going to stay and I'm raising my child. So I really want to keep the highest value of my home. I need to have that. And we, this is a nice neighborhood. We have the very nice paired homes that have come in. I'm not worried about those. I'm just worried about these condos. I thought it was supposed to be a two-story, but when I read a little bit more, it looked like it was three or four stories. That's just too much. I know there are also other people that are being impacted, like Clark Farms or the other homes that are behind American Academy. There's also Bradbury Ranch residents in there. They also, their home values are going to be affected because it's going to increase traffic right on Jordan to Main Street. That's already a really bad intersection for accidents. There's not enough parking. We already have problems with the speeding in this neighborhood. And I thought being on a circle, we wouldn't see that. But if you add that many more people in, there's going to be a lot more speeding, a lot more accidents. I just, I don't want it. I don't want to see it here. And I agree with Brandy. I think, you know, keep it single-family. And that's what this, that's why people moved here. I mean, when you go to buy a house in Newtown, you look for the best value. It's like, is this a nice development? Are these nice houses? People take care of them? If they wanted to buy a condo, they'd go to a big condo area. We don't need that over here. We have enough of that on Parker Road. There's many, many, many condo areas. And there's more down in Cottonwood. We don't need that here. And I just, I have the same passion that everybody else does about the concerns, about the traffic, about the property value loss. I'm really worried about the criminal activity and accidents on Jordan to Main Street. I just don't see how people are going to get in and out. And I also don't think that there, I know that when we went to the original meeting, there was something that said it was going to, they were going to have a dog park. Really, I mean, there's, I have a dog. There's plenty of dog parks around.
30 seconds, Yvonne.
I don't think that needs to be in there. I think it festers a lot of, I don't think we need a dog park in there. They need more parking is what they need. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Yvonne.
All right, next up, we have Dusty Talent.
Dusty, are you there? Dusty?
Working on it.
Okay.
Hello?
Dusty, are you there?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
I can. Can you just please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Dustin Talent, 17197 Springfield Court.
Thanks, sir.
So my concern echoes with property value and parking. So I am the lot that directly will face the incoming townhomes and commercial lots. So I am the corner property owner to the facility. I have had multiple conversations with Norris Design. I talked with them last October and November in regards to the condo units and where they were placing them. They did adjust those to the opposite side of the lot. But again, it still falls into this is not a condo area. So I am comfortable. I think the area does need to be developed and it should be, you know, consistent throughout the community. So, single-family homes, multifamily dwellings, townhomes, two stories that go directly with that. The only portion of the plan that I am opposed to are the condo units. Those are going to bring in a significant amount of traffic as when somebody buys that condo, they do not have one vehicle. They are typically two vehicles per unit. Underground parking above parking is already going to be affected with the new homes going to the east of us. Construction, you can already tell with one dumpster on each side, it is barely enough to get any kind of trucks or construction traffic through. They are adjusting and moving all of the time through that. So my biggest thing is traffic impact as well as the type of development that is being made. Single-family, multifamily homes, completely comfortable with. I am all for Norris moving forward with those types of designs. We are starting a family, so I will have young kids running through my cul-de-sac individually or my circle right now. There is not enough parking for the immediate community that I have in our houses. So we already have people parking on the street at the end of that dead end, two or three vehicles per night in that respect. So you bring in more townhomes, condos, that only gets worse. And you can't tell me the overflow parking will- that only gets worse. And you can't tell me the overflow parking will not go into mine, which then brings more traffic into my individual units. Um, which brings up opportunity for increased crime and or, you know, accidents of people not paying attention as they're crossing and so forth. Pool, um, great. I, we will use that. We're comfortable with it. Um, if it opens and when it opens, uh, that has been a completely separate issue. But the planning and zoning really needs to be adjusted for this. So the biggest thing I am looking at is do the development, but please review the plan and do not zone it for condo units. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dusty.
All right. Next up, we have Tammy.
All right.
Hello, can you?
Tammy, are you there? I can.
Yes.
Did you state your name and address for the record?
Yep, Tammy Henkels. My address is one seven three eight four East Newtown Parkway.
Thank you.
Yep. So really I, um, echo everything that everybody else has said on the call, um, or the meeting so far. Uh, essentially my issue is with the condos and the condos going in. Um, more specifically, you know, I had a condo before I moved into this house. And the reason I sold the condo is because so many of those units ended up being owned by landlords that were renting them out. And the minute we got renters in, the neighborhood completely went down because they were leaving trash everywhere, more graffiti, friends using dumpsters. So it just was, um, you know, something that a reason I wanted to get away from condos. So the last thing I want is condos in this neighborhood that I bought in. I don't want the level of, um, disrespect that comes from a lot of the renters that end up moving into those condos because a lot of investors buy them and rent them out. And I just think it will cause a lot more crime and a lot more graffiti and other stuff in our community, which is not something I want. And specifically why I sold the condo that I had prior to buying this house and why I moved into a house. In addition to that, my other major concern with the condos is the traffic. Um, you know, right now, to echo what everyone else says, I live on one of the main streets that goes through, uh, to American Academy. Every year during the school year, um, always add drop off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon. Cars are flying through here. Uh, I've even had somebody who dropped me off that was like, why are these people tailgating me in a residential neighborhood? I had people try to pass me because they didn't like the speed I was doing in a residential neighborhood. I've called the police several times on vehicles. I've had many confrontations with people speeding through and with the condos and the increase in traffic. And again, with the potential for them to be renters, um, because you have investors buying them and renting them out. There just becomes a, a complete disrespect, uh, for the community and for the people that live in the community. And I don't want to be in a situation where I'm calling the police every single day on somebody speeding through the neighborhood. Um, you know, I had one where a woman almost hit a child if he hadn't stopped and saw her coming because she was flying through the neighborhood. So again, it's just my concern with the condos is the increase in the traffic. Um, and the speeding that occurs already, and then the additional speeding that we will have. And then additionally, just the, um, the decline in neighborhoods that I have personally seen living in a condo situation. Um, and again, once, you know, if we have a bad market, you get a lot of these investors.
Thirty seconds, Tammy.
Than anything else. And I just don't want those renters in there and destroying our neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have S. Watzke.
Okay, Mr. Watzke, Ms. Swatzke? Are you there?
My name is Steve.
All right, Steve.
Steve Swatzke, yes. I live in one seven four nine two East Newtown Parkway.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, my wife and I just moved to Parker about a year and a half ago. Uh, we're, we're retired and we wanted someplace that was, didn't have quite the hubbub of, of a city, so to speak. And, uh, even though I knew there was going to be a lot of construction going on of single family homes and, and paired homes right to my backyard. Um, I'm having a whole lot of issues with that right now. Most pri- uh, primarily about drainage issues. All the water that they're, that they're pouring on the, on New sod winds up in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. And it's just a quagmire. I've tried various things to, to rectify that, but I get no help from the, from the builder whatsoever. The other thing I wanted to say is, um, I went and applied for a building permit. Excuse me. When I went to pay for it, I asked, uh, the clerk, I said, do I make it out to the city of Parker? Oh, no, the town of Parker. Now that kind of struck me as being, okay. Where did the town go? It's, it's already turned into a city. Why do we want to make it a, a, a booming metropolis? I thought this Parker was supposed to be, you know, kind of a lean more towards a rural side. Condominiums certainly don't make that rural. And I echo everyone else's concern about the traffic. It's already bad enough with the construction traffic going through here. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
All right. And next up is Mike. Hi, Merle.
Mike, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, so my, my name is Mike Heimer. I live at one one three six four South Trailmaster Circle.
Welcome.
I am a, a member of the, I'm, I'm on the Metro District Board as a treasurer and also the, the Masters Association Board as a treasurer. So the one comment that, uh, one person is running everything is, uh, inaccurate. Uh, there's a, I'm a, I don't know if that was directed at me, but I'm going to answer it as if it, if it was. So the, uh, I'm just a one member of the board and there's several board members on both boards. So it's just not one person living, uh, running everything. And then, uh, we've been working since two thousand sixteen with Pacific North to, uh, uh, on, uh, on the projects to refinance the bonds. In two thousand eighteen, we were able to refinance the bonds. So without refinancing the bonds, uh, we're not going to be able to pay them off if this, uh, if this north project does not get developed. So the hundred fifty-six units are, are key to paying off and the financial viability of the, of the metro district is if, if they don't get built, then the metro district isn't going to be solvent. And then, uh, the home values in the whole community will be, go down as a, as a, as a reason of that. So that would be, we run more risk of devaluation our property values without building this project. And then, uh, the condos, I bought my house in two thousand twelve. There was condos in this community then. We have nine condos in our community today. So there's condos part of our, our community already. And then, uh, uh, the, the, the seven people who spoke, uh, against this project represent, only represent two percent of the community because we currently have two hundred sixty-seven homes in the Newtown Masters Association. And so ninety-eight percent of the community are in favor of this project moving forward. So as the metro district and as the Masters Association, we've been working with Brian and Pacific North. Uh, again, for the last four years and we're in, uh, we're in favor of this project and it's vital for the financial viability of the metro districts. And I believe, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Commissioner Poole, we have no more additional speakers. We have one speaker that spoke before Cory Wilks that raised her hand. Do we allow that?
No, we don't do that. No.
All right.
All right. Then we will, we will bring the public comment portion of this meeting to close. Um, Commissioners, do you need further information from the staff and or the applicant?
Yes.
No, I don't.
Go ahead, Ruth Ann.
I'd like to address just a couple of the questions that were brought up. Uh, the first one is the traffic impact. Uh, there was a question raised regarding the metric used and, uh, questions regarding, uh, the, the use of street parking. And, uh, I'm going to give you all the questions and you can answer them in whatever order you want. Uh, and then street parking versus how much parking is anticipated for the, uh, uh, what I believe is medium density, not high density, uh, design. Um, so that's a question I had. And then, oh, are there any statistics regarding crime and underground parking? Those are my questions.
Okay, so. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just, you, you can go ahead, Brianna.
Okay, so I'll answer the parking question. So part, following this application, they are required to do a site plan, which is where parking will be reviewed. This application is required to meet the parking standards outlined in the town's code. We are cur- this is currently under review, but they will be required to meet all of the standards in the code. Um, that is a requirement of approval. We will not be able to approve it without that. Um, are there any more questions on parking before we move to the next question?
Uh, I have, I have a question about the parking. It was brought up that in an area, there's parking on both sides of the street. And there's not enough room for, say, emergency vehicles or another vehicle to pass or two vehicles to pass when there's parking there. So I was wondering, uh, is there going to be maybe consideration down the road? If that's the case, that maybe only one side of the street would be no parking and the other street, other side would be allowed parking for, uh, enough vehicles to pass through?
So all of these applications are reviewed by traffic and fire life safety and they are required to meet standards to ensure that a fire hydrant or fire, excuse me, fire truck or any emergency services can get through. Um, that is also reviewed at site plan and so they are required to meet those standards.
Um, Bree, I can jump in real fast. Uh, the access road is only proposing parking on one side of the street, uh, leaving the required twenty feet of clear width between the edge of the parking stalls and the remainder of the road. Um, that has been looked at by South Metro and the town's engineering department.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. So the next question was on traffic in the traffic study. Um, I'm going to ask Bill Maher to answer how they develop their traffic study and the standard they use.
Thank you, Brianna. As part of this application, we had a very thorough, uh, traffic study that was submitted and reviewed and approved by town staff. And I may defer to, to Tyler and Alex Masdah on any comments from a town staff perspective. But in, in short, the findings said there is not an in, a noticeable increase due to the proximity of the adjacent roads, the arterials and collectors on all sides of this development. It provides very good access. And, uh, there's opportunities to, to disperse traffic in various ways. Um, so our, our, our findings in our study were very supportive and did not indicate any increase, substantial increase at all in any type of traffic. As I mentioned, um, Tyler or Alex, I would defer to on any of their comments from their review process.
Uh, thank you, Bill. So one specific question we received during public was regarding uh, roadway capacity and the metric they use. Um, I believe it was in regards to Newtown Parkway. Um, according to the traffic study, it's currently, um, the developer did take counts before they did the traffic study. It's currently at three hundred and fourteen cars per day. Um, our limit for residential local roads is two thousand cars per, cars per day. And we don't like to get anywhere near there. Um, we like to keep it ideally around a thousand, but the traffic study has shown that the majority of traffic will actually be heading north, uh, through the commercial development and very few cars will, um, actually go south to that road. It's a very small increase, if any.
Thank you. Ruth Ann, did that answer your questions?
Yeah, I, I think it did. Uh, the one thing that hasn't been discussed yet is if there's any information regarding underground parking and crime.
So part of this application, Landy's applications don't look at statistics for crime as part of the review process.
It is, but it is reviewed by, um, the, the different safety organizations like the police and the fire, fire department, et cetera. Were there any comments or concerns raised by the police regarding underground parking?
There have been no comments raised by those referral agencies at this time.
Okay. One last question. Um, since we're dealing with just the land planning aspect of this, has there any, been anything actually done regarding the design of the units that has, that's, that is a part of this application?
The applicant has submitted site plan applications for these buildings. Uh, they are required to meet all of the new design guidelines that were approved in twenty eighteen. So we are working through that process, um, at this time.
And the percentage of buildings on Parker Road that, uh, one of the commentators referred to, uh, most of those buildings were constructed prior to the new design development standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Anything else? Ruth Ann?
Um, no, that covered all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Chairman Poole, I have a question regarding, and this is for Tyler or Bill. When was the traffic done? Before the pandemic or after? Or during?
Uh, it was before the pandemic. Right now, for any new developments, we're not allowing them to take traffic counts because obviously they'll be lower because nobody's driving. So they are taken before the pandemic.
Thank you.
For the questions?
None from me. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then hearing none, we will close the public hearing at seven forty-five. And Planning Commission discussion, we will just kind of, I'll, I'll call your name and we'll go from there. Um, Eliana.
I'm sorry, Gary, you broke up on the questions.
Oh, it's just, we're, this is just planning commission discussion. I'll, I'll probably start with people that were here last time. We'll come to you last.
Okay.
Uh, Susan.
Oh, okay. Um, well, I sympathize with the residents that spoke. Um, I, I, I know it's frustrating when you move into an area and you know there's going to be more building and it doesn't quite meet your expectations. Um, so I do sympathize with that. However, um, this is consistent with the Parker twenty thirty-five, uh, master plan, so I, I will support it.
Okay, Rich?
Yes. I just want to thank all the citizens that came on to the Zoom meeting today and, and gave their opinion of, uh, this complex. And appreciate that, wish that more, more citizens would do that. But I think there definitely is a need for townhomes condos to meet the town's, uh, housing needs and expand the, uh, housing options for future homeowners. Um, I think the development fits in with the town's twenty thirty-five master plan. And I think the proposal meets the nine criteria requirements. And from what I've seen so far, it looks like a well-designed, first-rate neighborhood and I'm glad to see some of this, uh, underground parking to help eliminate street parking. And I will be voting for it.
Uh, John?
I agree with Rich. I'm, I'm, I would like to thank all of the, uh, folks who came into our Zoom meeting. And we appreciate your input. I'd also like to thank staff for, uh, having a good handle on what's going on with this and having the answers for it and, uh, working with the developer to make sure that we have a clean development. Uh, living just west of this whole development of Newtown for many years, I'm glad to see it finally being able to come to fruition and completion. It's, uh, it's been sitting there as a, a, uh, I don't want to call it an eyesore, but I will call it an eyesore. It's something that needed to be filled out. It will meet the needs that we have, uh, for a diverse community. So I'm going to be in support of it.
Uh, now, Eliana.
Thank you, Gary. Um, not having been on the first session, uh, but having read everything that I needed to read and, uh, I could see where there were some technical issues. Um, I am in favor of certainly, uh, being supportive of the movement going forward and being supportive of the, uh, of what it is and the growth and, uh, adding to, as long as it is aligned with the twenty thirty-five master plan and all the criteria have been met, I will also be in support of it. as long as it is aligned with the 2035 master plan and all the criteria have been met, I will also be in support of it.
Thank you, Eliana. Uh, Ruth Ann?
Yeah, I was very interested to hear, uh, all the commentary by the members of the public that came. And I also thank you for coming. Many of the issues that were raised are issues that are not dealt in the land development process. There are issues that are dealt with um, in other ways, either through HOA amendments or through, uh, discussions with the police for greater enforcement of traffic regulations or parking regulations, that sort of thing. Um, I'm in support of this. My hope is that many of the concerns that, uh, were raised regarding design and things like that have been dealt with structurally in terms of how we've, we've redone our, um, our design development, our design, uh, requirements. So I am in favor of this. I think that it does, in fact, as Susan said, that the, uh, 2035 master plan, we do need the, uh, the diversity in housing in Parker. And, uh, I think that this is a well, well-designed, uh, addition. And I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Uh, I concur with my fellow commissioners. I, I don't really have much that I would add, other than this appears to be something that will be very well, uh, constructed from everything we have seen. And especially when we apply the new design standards, uh, and the 2035 master plan. So, um, I will be in favor of it as well. Uh, we have, I think, three motions tonight before us. Uh, do we have a motion on the Plan Development Guide Third Development, uh, Third Amendment?
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker Plan Development Guide, Third Amendment.
A second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana. The Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker Plan Development Guide. I will call the roll. Eliana.
Aye.
Uh, Susan?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
And I am, I, all right, next, uh, our next amendment about, or our, our next, uh, motion on the sketch plan.
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker F2 Sketch Plan.
A second.
Been moved by John, seconded by Rich, the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker F2 Sketch Plan. Go down the roll again.
The two conditions.
Oh, yeah, with the, with the two, with the two conditions as.
Yeah, with the two conditions as listed by staff.
Yeah. All right. Uh, Eliana?
Aye.
Uh, Susan?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Gary, aye. All right. And the last motion, do we have?
Okay. I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town of Parker F2 Preliminary Plan.
A second.
Moved by John, seconded by Rich, the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker F2 Preliminary Plan. Uh, we'll call the roll again.
With the conditions again?
With the conditions as included.
With the conditions, I'm sorry, Eliana, or Brianna.
Thank you.
Susan?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Gary, aye. All right. That's item, that item. Are there any staff items, Jeff? For us?
No, we do not have any others, Gary.
Okay, all right. Then we will adjourn the Planning Commission meeting at 7:52. Thank you, Commissioners and other guests.